For the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello, Robert.
How you doing?
Good. This meeting is called to order at 8:01. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Bon Crooks?
Here.
Howie?
Here.
LaFever?
Here.
McLeod?
Here.
Stack?
Here.
Taylor?
Tifer?
Here.
Coram present. Mayor Stack?
Thank you, Mayor Stack. I would make a motion that we excuse Councilperson Tifer.
Support.
Or Taylor?
Taylor.
I'm sorry. Yes.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. The Chair would entertain a motion for the Council for the reading and approval of the minutes?
I would so move.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Appointments, zoning board, I just have to get to there first, please. Tonight, I would like to appoint or reappoint Frank Mazzella to the ZBA. His term actually expires 9/1 of 2015.
I would so move.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Howie?
Yes.
LaFever?
Yes.
McLeod?
Yes.
Stack?
Abstaining.
Tifer?
Yes.
Bon Crooks?
Yes.
Motion carried, Mayor Stack.
Thank you very much. We have no, under authority, city commissions, boards, and committees. We have nothing at this point. General B1, 33rd District Court, and I'll defer to Councilwoman LaFever in regards to fine cost fees for July 2012.
Thank you, Mayor Stack. I make motion to receive and replace and file the fines, costs, and fees for July 2012, which shows the City of Trenton owing the District Court $12,089.76.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Councilwoman LaFever. B2 is the Chrysler Group LLC, application for amendment IFT 2011-293.
Madam Mayor, I would move that we receive this and refer it to administration.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported to receive it and refer it to administration? Is there any discussion?
I have a question, if I could, please.
Councilwoman McLeod?
Direct it to Councilperson Tifer, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Is this an amendment of what we revisited or what we looked at a while ago?
This is somewhat consistent with the budget discussion we had, that there was another project that they weren't ready to tell us about. Looks like they're ready to tell us about it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. We're under groups and organizations. C1, the Trenton Rotary Club, is requesting the use of City Hall for a fundraiser to be held on October 18th. It is a murder mystery.
I would so move.
It's been moved?
Support.
Support for discussion? Councilwoman McLeod?
Yes. At a risk of sounding like the bad guy all the time when there's a rotary issue on the agenda, I will be requesting a roll call vote. And I would say this, that I don't think that we should give special treatment to any group, and I don't think the rotary is any exception. The idea that we're going to start allowing groups to use City Hall, you know, without leasing the building and without insuring the event, creates liability for the City of Trenton. And so, I do not believe that this is the kind of thing that we can engage in or should engage in. And I would also like to point out that I understand that this event is already being advertised, so it really is a good idea to ask for permission before you start advertising an event.
Okay, is there any other discussion?
Madam Mayor, is there any criteria that we typically would have for allowing such events? I know the last one was, what, three, four years ago?
We have had groups that have used the City Hall for different events when it comes down to. We had the event that Noel Jackson had for his first gala. That was here at City Hall. That's been many years ago. But the one thing that we do require if a group is going to use the facility is to pay for the attendant to open up and close the building. Now, from what I understand, because I talked to my husband about this tonight before I got here, they are not using any of the, they're not going to go into any of the offices. They were going to basically use the lobby and the council chambers. That's from what I've heard. Councilwoman McLeod?
Are they going to insure the event separately, or is this going to fall under the guise of the city's insurance for this private event?
The rotary has, the rotary has insurance that they can insure it and also put the City of Trenton as additionally insured.
So is that part of this proposal?
I'm sure that it's a part of any of our proposals, because we always make sure it's insured.
Well, I think that might have obviously given me less cause for pause. I mean, it certainly isn't in here, but I would be interested in knowing if they're going to insure the City of Trenton for this event.
I can probably guarantee that, and I will let you know Noel is new president, so he probably just didn't know to put it inside of the paperwork when it came down to it, because he's just been a president for the last month and a half.
Will you get back with us on that?
Yes, I can do that.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Councilwoman LaFever?
Yeah, being a part of the Rotary Club, there's different people who use, every year, we always allow the prayer day here for Batwether to come inside and use the facility, okay? So it's not very unusual to do that. And all the money raised from this will go towards an anti-bullying education for the mainly the school kids in the City of Trenton and the public schools to teach kids why bullying, somebody is not a good idea. And I wholeheartedly support that effort. And while I do understand Mary Ellen's concerns, I think that the Rotary Club will spend the money wisely and try and make the City of Trenton a better place for everybody. And that's why I will be voting yes.
Councilwoman McLeod?
You know, that's never an issue for me. I know that rotary does very good things for the city, so that's never an issue. And I mean, there are many clubs that do very nice things for the City of Trenton and for students, and I just think this is a bad precedent. We should not be allowing people to use City Hall as a hall. I mean, if it's all about school kids and bullying, why not use the school? I mean, it just, it's just a bad precedent, and I don't think the liability warrants allowing groups to use the City Hall after ours.
Okay. Anyone else? Councilwoman McLeod, are you wanting a roll call vote?
Please.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Is Councilperson Taylor aware of what we voted?
I am.
Okay.
LaFever?
Yes.
McLeod?
No.
Stack?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Tifer?
Yes.
Bon Crooks?
Yes.
Howie?
Yes.
Motion carried, Mayor Stack?
Okay, thank you very much. Our next item is C2, the Kiwanis Club Annual Peanut Sale, and it has been approved by the Civic Commission. It's for October 8 through the 13th, and I ask the pleasure of the Council.
I would so move.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any, any discussion?
Just a question. Has the Civic Commission had a chance to look at this and approve?
Yes, they have approved that.
Thank you.
Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Okay, next is the Trenton High School Girls Golf Team, which I see sitting in front of me, I think, with their coach. And they're asking for, let's see, September 15th from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. to collect bottles in the community. And what's the desire of the Council?
I would move that we agree with this.
Support.
It's been moved and supported?
Mayor Stack?
Sure.
Could we have the coach come down and tell us exactly what is proposed in terms of, you know, if there are notices that are going to go out, when they want things to come out?
Could you come up to the podium here, please?
Well, I actually had one of the students who was prepared to speak.
Oh, okay. Great, better yet.
Is this Laura?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Good evening. My name is Laura Backsow. I'm a senior at Trenton High School. I am the captain of the Trenton High School Girls varsity golf team. We are here tonight to ask the Council for permission to host a bottle drive in the Trenton community on Saturday, September 15th. Can donations received will help offset costs that the Trenton High School athletic budget can no longer support. Includes course practice fees, tournament entry fees, and possible equipment upgrade, like golf bags and rain gear. We appreciate the Council's consideration and thank you in advance from the Trenton Girls Golf Team.
Okay. Thank you very much. Councilwoman LaFever?
Just any questions you have, I have no problem answering.
Okay.
As far as, go ahead.
I guess I would, that sounds like to me to be the shortest bottle drive in the history of Trenton.
Yeah.
Okay.
So one hour bottle drive?
We weren't sure as far as what to ask for with permission, as far as a timeframe. I do know that Victory Days are afternoons, so we didn't want to conflict. The plan was, once things were approved, we were going to go ahead and pass out flyers, or whatever was the discretion of the Council, a week prior, explaining when we'd be back to pick them up. The bottle drive itself, that was just the pickup time, on the 15th, so.
Can I give you a suggestion?
Yes.
Because I've done bottle drives. I would do it on the brightest piece of paper you can have.
Sure.
To drop off at the people's store.
And then?
And also make sure that they tape it to the bag, because you'll get everything from dirty diapers to garbage, you know, going to the door.
That's what we're going to do.
Okay. So what day were you going to drop off the flyers?
Well, we wanted to wait for permission, but we're planning on doing that this weekend.
Okay.
And that would give a week.
Number eight?
Yes.
Saturday?
Yes.
And your pickup will be on September 15th? Are you doing the full town, or are you going to pick up, are you going just in one area? Do you have a certain area you want to go, or?
Once again, we're waiting on permission, but we're basically going nearby the ladies' houses, obviously nearby the school. We weren't sure exactly the routes, but.
Okay. If you need any maps, you can see the clerk, she's got maps, if you need maps of the city.
That'd be great, thank you.
Councilwoman McLeod?
I don't think an hour is enough.
Okay.
I mean, even if you're only going to cover a block with each young woman here, so maybe we should expand the time.
Okay.
Yeah, 8 to noon.
Okay, excellent, thank you. We weren't sure what to ask for, so I appreciate that.
Either 8 to noon or 8 to 1, I would suggest.
Okay.
Yeah, so do we need to amend our motion?
Yeah, just to, yes, I would actually say that it would be September 15th from 8 to, do you want to go with 1, or do you want to go with noon? It's up to you.
1 would be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, is that in full agreement with the makers of the motion? Who was the makers of the motion?
Bon Crooks, I thought.
Was McLeod and Taylor?
Oh, was? Then yes, it's fine with me.
Okay. Okay for you?
Yes.
Do you have a question, too?
I did.
Go ahead, Councilman Taylor.
Along with bottles, if any individual wanted to send a check to the team to assist them in equipment, where can we send a check to? The school board building, or?
That's a great question. To my knowledge, I think you could just send it to the Trenton Athletic Department, maybe Attention Girls Golf Team. I'm sure my athletic director, Brett Woodley, would, you know, welcome that, and that would be greatly appreciated, so.
And made out, made the check out?
Made out to Trenton Public Schools.
Okay.
You know, it's, because it was, my daughter played four years of varsity golf at Trenton.
Okay.
And years, quite a number of years ago. But it was a new program back then, and all the other teams, they'd go to regional tournaments, would have rain gear and everything else under the sun, and these poor girls would just get drenched. So I think it's important to support girls athletics, especially golf and other sports in Trenton.
Okay.
Very good.
It's greatly appreciated, thank you.
Councilwoman LaFever?
Hearing that, okay. And being, you started 8 o'clock morning, I would appreciate if you all went over to Councilman Taylor's house at 8 o'clock morning and got that check.
There'll be a check, there will be a check on the front door taped.
Don't come by my house till after 10:00, okay? I'm a late riser, okay?
Okay.
Good luck to you.
You got that?
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered, and the clerk will get a letter for you, so that you'll have it on you, just in case somebody were to ask.
Excellent.
Okay?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck, ladies. Do us proud.
Have you, have you had any games yet, or any matches?
Yeah.
Have you won?
Yeah.
Oh, good. I like that. Very good. Well, good luck for the rest of your season, then.
Thank you.
You do not have to stay for the rest of this meeting, believe me. Okay?
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming. C4 is the Trenton High School Girls Swim Team Bottle Drive, and they are requesting for October 13th from 10:00 to 1:00 p.m. And I'm not seeing if they're dropping off flyers here. Is there anybody from the swim team here? No? Okay.
Mayor Stack, I would move that we concur with the request.
Support.
It's been moved and supported? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Okay, under Department Heads and Officials, D1 is from myself. Basically, it is a letter letting you know what happened with the talk that I had with Bob Reinie from Henry Ford Health System, and I don't know if.
I would move that we receive it and place it on file.
Support.
Maybe that's not even the right thing to do, since it's coming from us, but.
It's been moved and supported. Go ahead.
You know, we've had so much discourse about this issue, that just because the letter's on file, I really would like it if you would tell the people here and at home, give them an update to the extent that you can, based on what you were told, and so that they have an idea of what's going on.
Well, basically, I had a conversation on August 23rd with Bob Reinie, who is the COO, the Chief Operating Officer for Henry Ford Health Systems, and it was regarding the Riverside Hospital property. The conversation, he expressed concerns about the Council, you know, that he expressed both privately and publicly regarding the issue. And, you know, basically, we had a nice conversation. They're willing to help us with moving forward. If Dr. Nasir does not move forward, that they would help to possibly provide some help in the area, because they do have connections for grants. That, you know, I'm trying to think of exactly how he said it. He, they were wanting to help the, okay, locate the funding and resources to facilitate the demolition and cleanup of the property. They agreed to talk to us in approximately two weeks, and at that time, we'll find out. Dr. Nasir has been issued a letter of what he cannot have at the facility. We did receive a memo in the, a memo today that just came between the time that I left from work here to the time that we got here in regards to the deed restrictions and what Dr. Nasir cannot have at the facility. And at this point in time, I have not heard from Dr. Nasir to know where he's going to be going with this, but we know that it's been referred to his legal counsel. Councilwoman McLeod?
So, in essence, Henry Ford is saying, according to your letter, that it has taken some of the deed restrictions off to allow Dr. Nasir to proceed for the uses that he had discussed in his meeting with Henry Ford. Is that basically your understanding?
I'm not fully aware. I don't believe that they've taken anything off. I think they've basically have always stuck to what they've had on the list. I don't think that they've actually taken anything off of the list that I'm aware of. If it is, it's, unless my city administrator, Jim Wagner, can tell you if something has been taken off, but I'm not aware of it being taken off. If you have something you want to say, Jim?
Actually, Madam Mayor, this communication dated today from David Lee, their senior counsel, indicates what they will not allow him to do. And however, the big thing is, in the second from the last paragraph, the long-term acute care hospital that he was concerned about and wanted to construct there is something that they said they would allow.
I would make a motion that we receive and place the September 4, 2012, communication from Henry Ford's System Vice President and General Counsel.
Support.
Well, we had a motion on the floor for the other document, too. Do you just want to include that, or?
Yes.
Okay. Who was, Timber was the support. Is that okay with you?
Hmm.
Okay. Councilwoman LaFever, discussion?
Well, Mary Ellen may believe it takes the deed restrictions away. It really does not, okay? So I hope it works out. I hope that it really does. But anytime you have a list of, how many are there, Mary Ellen? 10?
There's seven.
Seven. Anytime you have seven deed restrictions, it makes it awful tough. And some of them are pretty general, to go out and borrow money to do a project. So I hope it's enough to have Dr. Nasir go ahead with the project.
Go forward.
That I'm hoping for, okay? But at least it sounds like, my interpretation, is that they're willing, if it doesn't work, they understand that they are one of the problems with that building, and they're willing to assist us somehow to get the building torn down, is what I believe it says. Is that the interpretation, Mary Ellen, or not?
Well, my interpretation is that Henry Ford is saying it doesn't own the property anymore. We all know that. And it's saying, to the extent possible, it will do what it can to help us, but it doesn't sound like it's assuming any obligation financially.
No.
Right. That's correct. Is there any other discussion? Councilwoman McLeod?
Yes. This letter from David Lee, the Vice President and General Counsel, indicates that they had a meeting. Dr. Nasir, Jim Sexton, and this Bob Reinie, or Reinie, and that Dr. Nasir expressed his desire to construct and operate a long-term acute care hospital at the site. Henry Ford says it is completely comfortable with removing the deed restriction that will allow him to construct and operate a long-term acute care facility at this site, provided that it would not be expanded or transitioned to a full-service acute care hospital in the future. So I guess that the way I interpret this, and the way I interpret your communication dated August 30, is that the ball is now in Dr. Nasir's court, and I would request that this administration ask Dr. Nasir back down here and to get him to state his intention vis-à-vis moving forward with this project. I mean, he came to us a few months ago, and he plaintively, he pled with us to help him, and we did. And certainly, there's been a lot of discourse since then. So let's find out what Dr. Nasir wants. Is he going to move forward or not?
Good. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
Are you going to request that he come here?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
If he chooses not to, I would like something in writing as to where he's going with it. Okay. D2 is a memo for me. It's in regards to the non-union benefits, and it's consistent with benefit modifications originally negotiated with the union employees. I'm asking for the Council to consider the modifications to the non-union, you know, for the non-union.
Make a motion to agree with the non-union benefit issue proposed by the mayor at the last study session, which we have in front of us here. Make that motion.
Support.
I will let you know that there has been a revised, so.
Revised?
The revised edition.
Revised?
Mm-hmm.
Wait. My motion would be the motion that we discussed last week upstairs, okay? To make it fair to everybody, okay? 22 years I've been here, okay? We've always made it fair to people, all right? And whether it be union or non-union, you have to treat everybody, I believe, just me personally, as fair. I didn't hear one person out here say that when we did the cuts, that they should take more of a cut, or whatever. We did the cuts the same as we did for the ask-me people. And that's what I thought we discussed upstairs. Maybe I missed it, okay? Evidently, I did miss it again, okay? But I thought Bob Howie asked me for your recommendation, okay? You said that. I gave my talk. Councilman Tifer said, hey, whatever you have five votes for, I'll be the fifth vote for. That's what I remembered. If that didn't happen, somebody needs to tell me about that, okay? My motion is for this, for D2. It's the same, they would be paid, get their money back, the same as the ask-me people did in their contract, like we have done for the last 22 years I've been here. We've always done that, treat everybody fair. That's my motion. If there's no second, that's fine. That's my motion.
Okay, there's been a motion in regards to the.
So I second it for sake of discussion.
Okay, who had their hand up first? So, does anybody know?
It's, it was my recollection at the study session that it was going to be a tiered, that's like the revised that we have in front of us this afternoon.
Okay, tiered area, okay. Councilwoman McLeod?
No, I'm Bon Crooks.
Tim, Bon Crooks?
I'm your friend, Timber.
I've been saying McLeod. I've been saying McLeod all night.
She's the fly.
Because you're always calling on her, that's why. I was under the impression, too, like Councilman Howie, that we were going with this revised plan and the tiered system. I never heard one, I guess I missed it, but I would support the revised system that I thought we were all in agreement with upstairs.
So, Councilman Tifer?
I agree. The tiered piece was the discussion we had upstairs.
Okay.
Other than that, I think it's all, Kyle, correct me if I'm wrong, the only difference revision is number two, the tiered approach.
That's correct. Councilwoman LaFever?
I guess I'm flabbergasted. None of you heard Bob Howie ask the mayor for her recommendation upstairs? Nobody heard that but me? That's correct. Bob, you didn't ask the mayor the last conference session what her recommendation was?
We did.
You did, and she grabbed a piece of paper and said, I've got it right here in writing, this is my recommendation?
And that recommendation that we received on that evening is, was it a tiered?
That was an option.
Right.
That's fine, whatever.
I don't recall it that way.
That's fine.
So we have a motion? Yeah, the motion was for the $800.
I would make a substitute motion that we approve the revised D2.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supportive with the substitute motion to have the tiered system. Councilwoman McLeod?
Unfortunately, I still cannot vote yes for this. And I just very briefly want to say that it's because I don't think we are in a position to, quote, "catch up." That's, that's what was being advocated, that, you know, we're going to catch up this group with every other group, but unfortunately, I don't think anything has changed. I don't think the City of Trenton has won the Lotto. I don't think that our property values are up again. I don't think that there is any funding source that's coming to us that we were not aware of at the time of budget. And quite honestly, the idea that we are going to catch up, I mean, we asked for 5% reductions in pay because the city's situation was dire, and I don't think there's anything that's changed about this. And so, the idea that we are going to offer a goodwill loyalty reward. And so, the idea that we are going to offer a goodwill loyalty reward, um, for people to come to work is, is nothing I can support. I don't think our budget can support this. And unfortunately, I mean, if we had a lot of money, I would give every one of you, um, a loyalty reward. But that's, that's not the case, and that's my opinion. So I'll be asking for, um, a roll call vote, please.
Councilman LaFever?
Unfortunately, Mariella, I mean, I have to be on your side voting no, but for a different reason, okay? I respect that. And you put a no on the ask-me contract, is that correct?
I voted no on all the contracts.
I can, I can, I can respect you for that, okay? You've been consistent with that, okay? Uh, however, once again, I have to be consistent and, uh, over the whole time I've been here, I just always ask, uh, with my employees at work, my employees here, to treat them fairly. I don't think that is a fair way to treat our people who are, some of these people here took promotions out of the, uh, ranks and file to take their job they have today, and there's a lot of people making a lot more money than they are in their own department. And they go ahead and pick a handful of people out here who are supposedly gonna lead us through this problem we have, the people that I believe in, and say they're not gonna get it, doesn't sit well with me. So, on the contrary, I will be voting no also, because I don't think it's fair enough. So I'll ask for a roll call vote, one with Mariella.
Councilman Howie?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I will be voting yes for this, but I just wanted to, to, to make a couple of comments. Uh, one, I agree with, with Mariella. Um, I don't believe we're out of the wood yet either. I think we still have some tough times. Hopefully, our, our, our revenue sources continues to, to, to grow and, uh, we control expenses. However, I, I don't feel that this body should be picking winners and losers. I think if, if, as far as the union members, um, the three union contracts, um, I think all you know, I voted no for that, um, mostly because of opening up a defined, uh, benefit plan, but it was other giveaways like this that I had concern with. But I believe this is a fairness issue, and I believe if, if we give it to the, the union people, then I think we need to come forward with the, uh, the non-union. So I will be voting yes on this.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Just to clarify, we are voting on the revised D two?
That's the substitute motion.
For the substitute motion. Okay, McLeod?
No.
Stack?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Tyfer?
Yes.
Vaughn Crooks?
Yes.
Howie?
Yes.
LaFever?
No.
Motion carried, Mayor Stack.
Thank you very much. Okay. D three is from our city administrator. It's in regards to sign ordinance.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, pursuant to a request of Councilman Howie and some comments from some other council people, I requested the city planner outline the method to redo the sign ordinance, and the method is on the backside. It's referring it to the planning commission and for changing it, seeing if there'll be studying it.
I'd make that motion that we refer to the planning commission for a recommendation.
It's been moved and supported? Discussion? Councilwoman McLeod?
Just a question, do you have any idea what that's gonna cost us to have Becker and Raider involved?
Uh, it's part of their monthly, uh, stipend, and actually, they have provided some material al- already. I actually think it's more of the, going to the planning commission for them to hold a hearing.
Okay. And then, once it's passed, it costs you money to have the ordinance put into the ordinance book. That's, you know, there will be a fee for that. Councilman LaFever?
The last time we tried it, it turned out to be an unbelievable deal down here. It cost the city a lot of money. They tried to do things that were over-restrictive, in my view, okay? I believe that Mr. Howie has sent a letter. I believe he's sent a letter, uh, months ago. Have you never heard any back from him? Is that fair to say, or am I misquoting you?
No, that's fair to say. And, and perhaps I can forward the letter, Ryan, to our city clerk, and she can read it out loud and put it in the, the record.
I guess if we're gonna go out and spend a, a bunch of money and there isn't a whole lot of support up here, it doesn't make sense to me.
Madam Clerk? And Madam Mayor, before we read that, I'd like to, I think, do we require a motion to read that into the minutes, Wally? Or not?
Do the m- motion to read it in the minutes?
Yes, to enter it into the minutes?
So moved.
Motion.
Support.
Okay. Moved and supported? Okay. Madam Clerk?
All right, this letter is dated August eighth, two thousand eleven, and it's addressed to the planning commission regarding the central business district sign ordinance. Dear Planning Commission, the planning commission's recommended changes to the signed ordinance within the central business district were discussed at the downtown development authorities' meeting on May fourth, two thousand eleven. Please be advised that the DDA does not support the current sign ordinance, nor does it support the planning commission's recommended changes approved at your meeting of February twenty-third, two thousand eleven. It is the opinion of the DDA that both the current ordinance and the proposed changes are unduly restrictive and would hinder business recruitment and development. The DDA remains supportive of, of the recommended modifications as discussed by the joint subcommittee of the planning commission and DDA, so see attached draft, and would welcome the opportunity to meet and discuss potential changes to the existing sign ordinance. Please contact me if you would like to schedule a joint meeting to further discuss this matter. Thank you in advance for your consideration, and please do not hesitate to contact me if you have any questions. Sincerely, Trenton Downtown Development Authority, Robert Howie, Chairman.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Is this something, uh, we want to put on a study session in the future, or? No? Okay, so we're gonna refer to the planning commission, and the letter has been received to put in, or on file with the clerk. Councilman Tyfer?
Uh, just a question. We've been through this so many times. I guess the question would be, if there's a recommendation from the DDA slash planning, planning commi- why don't we get that through, get it presented, and see if we can, uh, accept it as it is? And then, you know, whatever it takes for, if the planning commission first has to pass it and pass it on to us without us redoing all it, I, I'm not in the mood to go through this again. I think if they want to make it more, less restrictive, and they've got both the DDA and the planning commission are in agreement, we gotta get it to origin as fast as we can and get it passed, and not study this to death and spend a lot of money doing it.
Agreed.
Madam Mayor, if, if I may.
Who was first?
Go ahead, Bob. I'll go after you.
Councilman Howie?
It has gone to planning commission, and planning commission has received and placed on file, so they, they don't plan on acting on it. They believe it's, it's, it's adequate the way it is. So, we can send it back as, as a request from mayor and council, and then perhaps they'll look at it differently, not quite sure, but, um, I agree, it's probably gonna come back with the same response.
Councilman Barker?
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Go. I'm not jumping in.
No, go ahead if you wanna.
No, I, I just, the question is, what option do we have if the planning commission doesn't want to act? We, we can't just overrule a planning commission.
Well, is there something that we can do in regards to, we can't overrule the planning commission?
If, if we take a look at, uh, Mr. Tellerico's documents on the back page, it says that there'd be a recommendation by planning commission, but doesn't, it eventually comes back to council for approval. So that, their planning commission is a recommending body.
The question is, what if they recommend nothing?
Then we can either accept that response, or we can make a.
Forward on.
Move forward on, on a different, different direction.
Why don't I, um, why don't I go ahead and have Mr. Wagner talk with Ben Tellerico in regards to the planning commission? And see, um, you know, what their, what their ideas are? And we can go from there and, uh, maybe move forward with it, or, or just as it might stay the same. Councilwoman McLeod? Oh, I'm sorry, Vaughn Crooks.
Well, I, from what Councilman Howie is saying, you think that the sign ordinance for the downtown development area is too restrictive?
Absolutely, it's anti-business. I mean, let's, let's just go over a couple of the items. I, I don't, haven't gone through it in, in months and months, but just, just for the folks at home, I mean, the, the, the thing that we have something, a restriction in there that it cannot be interior illuminated, I mean, just common sense would say that that's just not practical. An interior illuminated sign, ninety-nine point nine percent of the signs out there across America are illuminated interiorly.
Sure.
Twelve square feet per side, I mean, that's, that is very, very minimal. Forty-eight inches high, I mean, tho- those are just items that, in requests, are just, are not business-friendly. And, and my, my, I guess, comment to, to councilperson Tyfer is, hey, I don't want to keep debate this thing anymore either. Let's either move forward. The reality is, this body, you folks, except for Kyle and myself, approved it, whether you knew it or you didn't know it. It went through supposedly, the DDA didn't approve it, it came to you, you approved it, next you know it's an ordinance. So, I think we need to be responsible, and, and if this body does not believe that it's overly restrictive, that's fine, everybody's entitled to vote. I personally believe that it's overly restrictive, it's gonna discourage business. I'm all for encouraging businesses in our downtown, as well as West Road, not discourage them.
Go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, I think if a business wants to come to Trenton right now, I think we ought to put up the red flags and welcome them and put, uh, beams in the ceiling, because, you know, nobody's knocking down our doors to put businesses down there. And I think somehow, we could come up with a variance of some sort and, you know, send it through the planning, send it through the zoning board if we have to, but come up with, if the, if somebody wants to open a business in Trenton, we should be the least restrictive for, for any reason. And try to, you know, work with people and give them a variance. They may need to put up illuminated sign if they need it. I mean, we gotta do whatever we can.
Yeah. I, yeah, I, I don't think a variance is the way to go, cause then that puts, that, that puts the, the, the decision into the planning commission's hand. I just think they shouldn't have to jump through hoops, they shouldn't have to go jump through those hoops, they shouldn't have to pay for those fees, they shouldn't have to wait six or eight weeks and go through the public hearings.
I agree.
To me, it's, we need to make a decision.
I agree. We oughta worry about getting business here first, before we worry about a sign. Period.
Councilman LaFever?
No, if I think of saying, I'll raise my hand.
Okay. Councilman, or Councilwoman McLeod?
I think it should go to the planning commission, which is the recommendation. And if it fails to act, then we should consider having a study session and asking the planning commission and the downtown development authority to come in jointly. So that we can kick the issue around and try to find some common ground. And, and, you know, I agree too, if it's restrictive, we oughta be looking at it, because obviously, we need to encourage businesses, not discourage them from coming here.
If anything, uh, would it, would anybody be interested in having the DDA and have that joint meeting before we start going, because they've already?
When, well, we did this. I mean, we heard everybody. He's right, we heard it, we kinda beat it to death. Why not let the planning commission come back now? I mean, they've heard us say, at least some of us say, that we don't want restrictions that are unreasonable. I mean, I don't want signs that are pornographic. I think they should bring something back that's reasonable. And then, you know, then we can act on it, and if there is no recommendation that comes back, then we'll take the next step.
Councilman Taylor?
I'm not gonna say anything at this point.
Okay. Uh, is there any more discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. D four is from our city engineer, Bill Hogan. Um, it's in regards to petition to combine property.
Thank you. For you is a petition, um, by Mr. Melonowski. He owns the property, uh, lot four and five on Sibley Road, and he's requesting a combination of those two forty-foot lots. So I'd like, uh, to refer to this, uh, petition to the planning commission for their review and recommendation.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, um, D five is the city attorney, zoning ordinance seven oh five three, amendment to the zoning, uh, code to address pet grooming in Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, proposed ordinance seven oh five three is a, uh, recommendation, uh, from the planning commission to amend the zoning code, uh, in really two, uh, manners and fashion. One is to, uh, redefine, or in the, uh, prior existing ordinance, the, uh, reference to, uh, pet, uh, as domestic, uh, animals, including a wider range of, uh, of animals, and to, uh, permit, uh, grooming activities in, uh, certain of the zoning districts within the city. It's available for council's consideration on first reading this evening.
I would move that we reject this ordinance.
There's support to the rejection of the ordinance?
I'll support for, uh, discussion.
Okay, discussion?
Cause you're intrigued, right?
I am.
Okay.
Councilwoman McLeod?
Okay, what I don't like about this is the definition of a domesticated animal. Now, maybe it's not meant to be comprehensive, but it says, and I quote, "pet, a domesticated animal such as a dog, cat, bird, rodent, parentheses, including a rabbit, end parentheses, fish or turtle that is traditionally kept in the home for pleasure rather than for commercial purposes. Common household pet does not include reptiles, parentheses, except turtles, end parentheses, dangerous or exotic animal or livestock. This definition shall not include animals that are used to assist persons with disabilities." So here's my first issue. What about people with ferrets, snakes, lizards? How about Vietnamese pot-bellied pigs? And what happens to the citizens of the city of Trenton who already have these animals? Do they have to get rid of them? Do they have to destroy them? I mean, this ordinance doesn't speak to that. I mean, we're, I mean, people define pets differently, and yes, I agree, we should not have wild tigers in our homes. We should not have those kinds of animals. I think that should be prohibited by law, but I don't have a problem with a ferret. A lot of people have snakes. Do I like snakes? Absolutely not. Um, but I think this is too restrictive a definition. The other problem that I have is this, what veterinary medicine offices can and can't do, says no pet grooming. So does that mean if I take my dog and to have its dupa shaved, it can't shave my dog because that's groom- grooming? Is this also meant to preclude any kennels within the city in certain areas? I mean, is that the point of this? I don't know, but if a kennel wanted to come in and establish a, a business somewhere in Trenton that wasn't as, in a residential area, would we be precluded from allowing that to happen? I mean, a lot of things in here make a lot of sense. I, I, I like all the animal protections that are in here. I think all the ideas about appropriate space and, um, cleaning and, and being mindful of your neighbors and all of that, I think that's all great stuff. But my problem is that I think this isn't, it doesn't go far enough to define, um, exemptions, and it doesn't speak to the issues that I just raised, and that's why I can't support it.
Okay. Okay. Councilman Taylor?
What triggered this coming to council?
Madam Mayor, maybe we ask the city engineer, I can help him out while he's coming down. What triggered it, there's a existing building located in downtown Trenton that somebody purchased. And the purchase that they were looking, the business they were looking to do was to have a grooming for dogs and cats. It's going to be a self-serve grooming facility. So people would come in, they didn't want to have, bring their dogs and then bathe them in their bathtub or in there. They would provide a tub space, a drying space and whatnot, and they'd come in there and pay a fee, and they would provide towels and whatnot. So the whole purpose of that was not to redefine domestic animals, the whole purpose of this was for that particular grooming to be included as an acceptable use in that particular business district. But I'll let our fine engineer explain it.
That's my understanding, that essentially, there was a couple cleanups required with the existing ordinance. One was the definition of a pet and the allowance of grooming. As it stood, and Mr. Long can correct me, veterinarian under the present ordinance could not allow for grooming, which we know that could be a part of their medical care. So that was, that was a cleanup component to include that in this.
But it's precluded.
Not if you continue to read on.
I did read it.
For this zoning, for this particular zoning location. The other part of it was that, as Mr. Howie mentioned, this particular facility was not defined in our present ordinance. Grooming, self-serve grooming, whether they do it in this particular location. So, not necessarily to accommodate this specific business, but to have it included in this entire area.
Okay, is there any other questions? Any more discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
Well, hang on a second.
I'm going to rescind my second of the motion of councilperson McLeod. And offer another motion if I could.
Okay.
And that would be to refer this to a study session. I think there's a need to assist businesses in coming into town. I think there's, and I think the whole nature of grooming has changed. For instance, we have to take our pets to get groomed to Gibraltar, because I don't believe they can be groomed in vet offices in Trenton. In fact, I could be wrong, but I think that's the case, so my wife explains to me anyway. So, I do think we need to re-look at this, to let our current businesses get into that business. And also to allow new businesses and the self-serve thing, you see it up and down in Monroe County. I mean, it's becoming a new fad where people bring their animals in. You know, if you have an apartment, you don't really have a place to wash your animal very well, so you bring the animals in there and you go through the process. But I think we need to flush it out. And what, like Mary Ann, what really concerns me is the definition of a domestic animal. And we went through that a few years ago, when we had the dangerous animal ordinance and...
Alligators.
It was all over the place, and it didn't make any sense, and I want to stay away from that.
I've got you making the motion, but I don't have a second.
Sorry, excuse me.
Okay, so it's been moved and supported. Do you have anything else here you want to say?
I've talked way too much.
Is there anybody else that has discussion that they would like to talk about with this? So it's to refer to a council study session? Okay. Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any late communications?
No, Mayor Seck.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to defer to Councilman Tyfer in regards to the disbursements, statements and reports.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would move that we approve the disbursements of three hundred and sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty-three cents.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
I would further move that we receive and place and file the Brownstown Auto Aid Report dated July of twelve.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported in regards to the Brownstown Auto Aid Report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
That's all, aren't you?
Okay. Other council business, I'm going to go to the council members. I believe that it's, I want to say it's Tim this time, started off with Tim.
I have a, no, I'm going to pass it over to city administrator Wagner in a second. But just so everybody knows, this last year, the Trenton Schools received a two thousand and twelve Education Excellence Award, a national award. And they have a sign that proclaims that. And we should probably put that up at one of our welcoming locations. Like we have signs for other organizations or other athletic stars or actresses or whatever in town, we've done in the past. They have one sign that's been done. I would suggest that we look into expanding this particular sign and putting it at three or four locations. So we sell ourselves better with the, with our neighboring communities with education. I mean, education has built this city. And, you know, last few years, we have not lived up to our levels of expectations, but we're starting to do that again. So if that's, the administrator, I'd like to pass this on to Jim and see where it takes us.
Sure. You can look at that and see if we can find room alongside of our welcoming sign and, I don't know how big it is.
The award was given a few months ago, we were all invited to attend, to attend it. I didn't attend it, quite frankly. But...
Not a problem. Do you have anything else?
Already done.
Councilman Taylor, you have anything else?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Councilman LaFever?
Just a little, those signs that are put up about Mayor Man Rysgup and J.J. Puss were paid for with private funds, okay? Unfortunately, some of them were put on county posts, okay? And the rumor is, a pretty good rumor, the county came by and took down most of them, okay? Which I'm appalled by, okay? So I would make sure if we put something out there, okay, that our friends of the county have so much time on their hands, they can come by and take our signs that were paid for by private citizens down, okay? I would encourage him, maybe it's quite doing that, that we prosecute them to the fullest extent of the law.
I don't disagree with that at all, Bill. I mean, I think that should anybody steal one of our signs, they should be prosecuted. Just like the county, it went a few years back, was taking signs down, and we tossed some of their folks in jail here, back in the seventies. So it's not, it's not the first time we've had this battle with the county. I'm referring to Jim, so that it gets done properly. So he checks with the county, makes sure it's not on county easements, that it's allowable. And that they have one sign currently, if we can raise monies to put up more, because I think it's really important to the city, that we let our citizens know how valuable education is and that we're moving in the right direction. You know, for years, we were the best school district in Wayne County, one of the top ten in the state of Michigan. I don't think it's any longer the case, unfortunately, but it appears we're trending back towards that way, and we ought to let people know.
Pretty good. Anything else, Councilman Taylor?
No.
Okay.
Just what I'm saying, it's a sign about education. I was talking to Mary Ann, I apologize, okay? Her and I rarely talk.
It's an award, the city got an award, it was, sorry, the school district got an award. And the awarding jurisdiction presented them with a sign to put up.
Are you, you're telling me you're going to go down to the school board and tell them to take their award and pay for it and post it? I mean, who got the award? Does the school board got it?
The school district did, Bill. And I think Jim can work all that out with them.
Okay, as long as somebody's going to pay for it.
That's what, all I'm doing is making sure that it follows the right channels.
You will tell the school board meeting to talk about it.
Well, not on Monday night, I won't. If I have to, I will though.
You can talk to the superintendent, so that's not a problem. We'll talk to the superintendent. Councilman LaFever, it's your turn.
Are you going this way?
Yep.
Okay, thanks. Just a couple of things that are important to me, and me probably, well, a few other people. One is on September fifteenth, my good friend, Mary Ann McLeod reminded me that that's Victory Day at the Trenton High School football field. And every year, the Trenton High football players, the cheerleaders, the band, the touchdown club, and a lot of other people get together, and they bring in fifty, what do I want to call those kids, Mary Ann, I'll get myself in trouble.
Developmentally disabled?
Developmentally disabled kids.
Special needs. Special needs.
And those kids are allowed to score a touchdown or cheer with the cheerleaders or play with the band. It's an hour and a half event, it's phenomenal. If you haven't been there, it's definitely worthwhile coming out for, it's from ten thirty till twelve, the Trenton Football Field. And nobody will feel better about being there than yourself. It's totally unbelievable, and they do a great job with it, so if you can make it there, be there at ten thirty, just an hour and a half. They have a little hot dog on chat afterwards, Lloyd Kyer will be there, they've got some news media coming. A couple of special players coming down, has no arms, a very capable kid coming down to get a little talk, it's very, very rewarding. Don't miss that. Next day is one of my favorite events, on September sixteenth, is the Taste of Trenton, which you go out there and get a whole lot of food. And that starts, I believe, at eleven o'clock until like five. It's at Elizabeth Park, all the local restaurants are there, you get a little sample for it. It's the, there's a lot of neat things that happen Elizabeth Park, it's a lot of fun, so be out there on September sixteenth, and we'll have a whole lot of fun.
Perfect.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman McLeod?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilman Howie?
I just want to do a quick shout out to inform all the residents that the Trenton Hockey Association will be out in force for their annual decal sale. That'll be Saturday, so you'll be seeing a lot of kids running around pounding on your door with Trenton Hockey jerseys on, looking to sell decals. And just a clarification for that sign that we talked about, and if it does infect, they put, install it in downtown, the maximum elevation is four feet.
One dollar for the decals.
Councilman Tyfer?
The only thing I wanted to share is the next council meeting, which would be the seventeenth, that'd be, I'm not going to be available. I've got a commitment that I've got to keep.
Councilman Bonkrooks?
Yeah, just a, maybe a briefing, maybe you could explain to us, Jim, how's things, how are things going with at Kennedy Ice Arena?
I've had some inquiries from different residents.
Actually, I had a conversation with them this morning, Mr. Bayoff. And I indicated that time is running on this particular thing, and I asked him what his timeframe was. And he informed me that his new partners were coming on board today and tomorrow. As a matter of fact, they're having a meeting tomorrow. And I indicated to him that it was, would be nice if Mr. Long and his attorney and the four of us could get together this week or early next week, so we could button this up and get this deal resolved, the default resolved.
Great, thank you.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay. I have a couple. Councilman LaFever, okay. I have a couple things, I just wanted the council to, I'll pass this around. This is from the Trenton Trojan Football two thousand and twelve season. We put an ad in, and I just wanted to show you what the ad looked like, so I'll pass that around for everybody to see.
No Trojans.
There you go. I wanted to also mention, first of all, I'd like to welcome our mayor, our past mayor, Tom Baritzki, I think he's out here somewhere. Just to welcome him to our meeting today. But the other thing I wanted to mention to you is, I got an email from Meg Larson, that is a resident of Trenton. And she informed me, just so, you're talking about the education end of Trenton Public Schools. Chuck Baker is a young man that graduated in nineteen eighty-two. And he is, he was responsible for the building of the rocket technology for the six rockets that were needed to hover the ship above Mars, so cables could drop it down to the ground. So just wanted to give him a shout out, that he's done a great thing there, and that we're proud of him, that he's from Trenton. So I got that from an email through one of our residents. Also, I have, I'm looking for, and I'll check with some of the council members, but they're having an event at the theater coming up on September twenty-second, I cannot attend. But I'm looking for somebody that would like to welcome the audience to the city of Trenton, and it'll be at the Trenton Theater. It's the premiere performance of a new play celebrating the legendary romance of Elizabeth Barrett and Robert Browning. As a resident of Trenton, it pleases me to tell you that this dramatic recital will be held at the Trenton Theater on Saturday, September twenty-second at seven o'clock. She asked if I could come, I have a family commitment on that day, so I'm not going to be able to attend. But if one of the council members would be willing to go, I, she would love to have somebody there to welcome the audience to Trenton. Also, after the meeting, if anybody's interested, I'm going to place an order for the tickets for the annual steak roast, which is the chamber. This is on September thirteenth, from four thirty to nine, and the dinner is served from five to eight. So any of you that are interested, let me know, and I'll make sure that we get tickets for our council here. Other than that, I'm going to go to the elected officials. Madam Clerk, do you have anything this evening?
Yes, I do, thank you, Mayor Seck. Just another reminder that Tuesday, October ninth, is the last day to register vote in order to be eligible to vote in the November sixth election. And just to kind of note, if any of the residents have a soon-to-be eighteen-year-old, that's going to, that their birth date maybe falls after the cutoff date, but before the election, as long as they register before October ninth, they will be eligible to vote. So if they have a birth date that's in between the cutoff date and the election in November sixth, they can still vote, they would just have to register before the cutoff date. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And one of the things I wanted, I didn't mention before, and before I go to our treasurer, our assessor, I just wanted to let you know that we had an employee appreciation day last Wednesday, and just for the residents, so that they know, no city funds were used to pay for those, for those items that we bought for the luncheon. So I, some of the residents were coming in, paying their tax bills, and they were probably wondering. So I just wanted to put that disclaimer out there, so that everybody knows. Okay, assessor, John Delquas. Treasurer, Mr. McCullough here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council. I just wanted to express our appreciation, the treasurer's office appreciation, to our taxpayers for paying their taxes in a timely fashion. Our office was very, very busy, I want to express appreciation to the staff of the treasurer's office. They did a very, very good job, and we're all awake and smiling, and we learned some things, and mostly went very, very well.
Very good, thank you very much. Any department heads that would have anything they'd like to bring up for the public to know about? Our city engineer, Bill Hogan?
Just like to share some updated information related to some road issues, not to beat up Wayne County. But we've had many calls regarding the maintenance of the West Road via dock. And also the eastbound lanes of King Road, right there at Fort Street, deep rutting. Well, both of those locations are on their radar, but unfortunately, won't be addressed this year, and hopefully, next year. So they're well aware of it. But I'd like to also share a, what they call their hotline number for road hazards. It's one eight eight eight, road crew. So one eight eight, R-O-A-D-C-R-E-W. So if we have any other complaints to the county, we can direct them to this number, and they'll monitor it and put it on their schedule.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Ms. Perna's coming up to the microphone, she's our recreation director.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to invite all of our residents who own a dog, that our tenth annual Dog Days of Summer Swim will be this Saturday at the Kennedy Aquatic Center from noon until three. Registration begins at eleven, and we will have onsite pet-friendly vendors for everybody to enjoy. And so come on out, the fee is five dollars per dog, and each dog must have its own handler. And it's really an amazing, fun event. And if anyone just wants to come down, just to come in and watch, please do so, it's really a lot of fun. You'll certainly have a smile on your face all day. Also, our registration for fall classes, fitness classes, skating registration are going on now. You can register at our office at City Hall and also online at trentonmi.org. And then also wanted to bring to your touch, as Mr. LaFever talked about, the Taste of Trenton is on Sunday, September sixteenth. In conjunction with that event is our annual Somewhere in Time event, it's our twentieth annual this year. And this is, we recreate Elizabeth Park as it was back in the early nineteen hundreds. It's just a nice, carefree Sunday afternoon to enjoy the beautiful park. And with the addition of the Taste of Trenton, it really is a fun event, family event for everyone to enjoy. And regarding the Taste of Trenton, they are selling pre-sale tickets for five dollars at the treasurer's office here at City Hall.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. Is there any other department heads that have anything they'd like to bring to the public? If not, now it's time for public comment. Anybody, anyone wishing to speak to the council, please state your name and address for the record, and that you direct all the questions through the chair. We ask that you keep your comments to five minutes, so that others have time for their comments also.
Hi, my name is Wendy Pate, I live at two zero three six Church Place in Trenton, which is located two doors from the Riverside property. And the last time you saw me here was on, it was right before the Fourth of July, so maybe July second or something like that. I wanted to say that I appreciate the council for making strides toward dealing with the Riverside property issue. I'm glad to see that it has become part of your council meetings once again. But we have had another deadline that has passed, which is why I'm here today. We were told, the residents were told, that we should wait until the end of August. And we were also given that same deadline last year, that we should wait till August, so we've waited till August again. And we were, we met with Mr. Wagner as a community, we had some neighbors that walked the property. And we had a conversation about the catch-twenty-two that the city is in. At one point, we don't want to bother Dr. Nasser too much, because we want him to stay in the community. But at the same time, there are major issues with how that property has been maintained. So we had that discussion, and we said, we'll wait. And you haven't seen me here, you may have seen me blogging on a few places, when people comment, I have not initiated the blogging necessarily, but you have to talk about what's going on. So we're here at the end of August. I can tell you some things that have been going on. We have, well, obviously, in the paper recently, you've seen that somebody may have been arrested for trespassing. That is not the only time the police have been called in the last few months. They've been at least called three times by myself. I know that the other neighbors have also called. I've also tracked a car that had been parked there for about three or four days. Had to put two and two together, figured out that they probably were in there most of the time. I don't know if they were living there, but we got the license plate, and I hadn't seen the car since. So I also want to thank the police department for their utmost care. When we have a complaint and we have a concern of what's going on in that property, they are always there to help us out. I can also tell you that at the public hearings that I've been to, I've asked multiple times for... times for the cleanup of the property not to include the, uh, application of pesticides, because I feel after ten years of neglect, that, that is probably not the best way to take care of a massive situation, massive parking lots that have massive amounts of grass growing. Um, I did find out one day on a bike ride that, uh, they were spraying chemicals on the property. Um, I had no, said this no less than three times, please make sure that that doesn't happen. I was able to get the names of the chemicals. One of them is prosecutor, one of them was momentum. I looked them up on the internet. One of the two is a pretty well documented, although not one hundred percent guaranteed human carcinogen, um, that is banned in some countries, and so I was not appreciative of that. I called Dr. Or, um, Mr. Wagner and told him that that was happening, um, and he would address it. However, a couple of days later, we saw them back. I was not home, a neighbor had let me know that they were back, and, um, I'm not sure what they were spraying at the time. Um, this has not controlled the weed population, funny enough. There are still massive amounts of weeds on the property, and last year at this time, I asked, and I have sent emails, and I had asked that in parking lot F, there is a string of bushes that weeds have been growing in, and I think I referred to this last time. I mentioned the eighty-year-old man who was sent out to pick them out by hand, and he was not able to complete the job, so if you drive on West Jefferson tonight, you will see weeds that are taller than me. And I would like to request for the last time that those weeds be removed. It's in parking lot F, right on West Jefferson, on the north side of the hospital. It's very easy to find, parking lot F. Now, what they have done to try to take care of this issue is they were spraying the weeds in the back parking lot of the hospital, and I asked the guys, I said, you know, why are you in the back of the parking lot? He's, and they were laughing. They said, I don't know, all the weeds are in the front. No one even sees the back. So I agreed with them, and I chalked that up to another, uh, example of how awful of a job these people do at maintaining the property, and how cheaply they get it done. And I understand that they wanna do as little as possible so they can maximize their profits, and yet, um, they still need to do it right, and it's, it's still a mess. I have pictures, you can drive by, feel free to do that. Look in parking lot F.
What I'll do is I'll call Mr. Nasir personally tomorrow and, um, talk to him about it, and tell him that it needs to be taken care of, otherwise I'll have to get with the engineering department, because it's called noxious weeds ordinance.
Which has passed September first, I believe, was the date that that was to be removed.
We'll have to start, um, you know, ticketing him for whatever we have to do, because we can't, we've gotta keep the area up. I know it's, it's been a headache, it's been a headache. I gotta tell you, it's been the biggest headache for me since I've been here, so, um, I will do what I can to try to, um, you know, get that cleared up, uh, with him, you know, I'll call him tomorrow and see what, you know, he has to say about it.
Well, that is what I'd also like to bring up, is how much more time you wanna give him. I know you wanna invite him to another meeting. That's two more weeks that we have to live with that property. We were told August thirty-first, we're gonna, we're gonna have to push, you know, if, if I don't know if he's coming the seventeenth, if that's the next meeting.
I will let you know that I talked to Henry Ford. They are, um, waiting for two weeks, because his attorney was reviewing the plan that, uh, they gave him, when it came down to what he could not put in the site, and so we were, um, that's where we're at, is two weeks. It was two weeks from last Thursday, when I talked to Mr. Reiney, and, um, I hope that in two weeks' time period, that's all I can tell you, because this has been stringing out too long for me, too, so...
Right.
Um, we are going to be, I, I'm gonna go ahead and find out in two weeks' time period what Dr. Nasir, he's either gotta make a decision whether he is or isn't. I mean, I don't own the property, that's the problem, you know, to just say, um, you know, exactly, you know, where he's going with it, but, um, I would like to at least give you or give the residents in that area some timeframe, because I informed Henry Ford that I wouldn't wanna live by that either, so, um, you know, it, you know, I've got family, I've got, um, some people around the corner there that I know. I know Ruth Van Brewer and all the different people that live on the street, and, um, I, it's time for, um, it's time for an answer, so...
Right. I'm worried about if he says, oh, I'm still in it, and I just don't want you to be fooled by him coming to a meeting and saying, I'm still in it, because it has been three years that he's had to worry about this problem, and all of a sudden, now we're at the last minute, and, you know, you know, obviously, you've seen in the paper that he's also looked elsewhere in other cities.
I've seen it.
I don't, I just don't trust that if he tells you once again that he's in it, that he is, and he will string us along as long as he can. He doesn't make decisions quickly, obviously. We've been dealing with him for three years, so I would request that the council, um, ticket him to the fullest extent. Let's get, you know, his deadline has passed, August thirty. We were told August is it, then you can start complaining again. So I think everything we can do to push him in a direction, whether that be out and let's get rid of him, and then the other thing that I noticed in the News Herald article was that the Riverview City Council was talking about that same property up there on Fort and King.
Yes.
And, um, when they were together, it didn't take them as long to decide to tear that building down, and, and they also included that the parking lot would be removed as well. So I thought that was an interesting approach at how they could deal with that property. It's one thing to tear down the building, but there's several parking lots also included in that property that we have re...
Mrs. Pate, the one thing I wanna let you know is that the city of Riverview does own that property, so they can make that decision like that.
Okay.
Um, that's the only issue, is that, you know, they do own it. I did watch that council meeting, 'cause you can watch their council meetings on, um, just like you can ours, on the, uh, on the, um, website, and, uh, I did watch that meeting to see what was being said. I did see Dr. Nasir sitting out in the crowd, so I do know that that's, you know, he was at that meeting. Um, there has been a change in what was gonna be in there, because they were looking at the, um, gymnast- gymnastics, downriver gymnastics. Um, I will tell you that I have welcomed her into this community. We're gonna try to see what, do everything we can in order to bring her business into our community, but in the meantime, I'm trying to see if I can keep Dr. Nasir to, you know, to do something with that site, because I'd love to have that developed, too. If not, we're gonna have to move forward on something else. So, um, if you can bear with us, I know you've been bearing with us for a long time. Um, I, I am gonna call him tomorrow, maybe he'll even give me some answers tomorrow, I don't know.
Okay.
But I will make, uh, every effort to make a conversation with him tomorrow and, um, see what we can do to find out where he lies with, uh, where he's at with the, uh, you know, the property.
And the last thing I'd just like to note is that I do have a copy of the blighted property, um, things that he needs to keep up, and just to highlight things, weeds shall be removed along the perimeter of buildings, fence lines, parking lots, landscape beds, which includes the parking lot that I was referring to. The retaining walls need to be structurally sound. We have a retaining wall in our backyard that could use some tuck pointing. Um, there's so much to be done. Graffiti, there is vulgar graffiti on the south side.
Took pictures of it.
Yes.
We showed him.
Okay, great. That has not been removed. There's so much, broken glass will be secured by replacement, reglazing. They're supposed to paint the boards that they put up to the matching color of the building. We've let this go. We've got to start making him responsible for this and get that deadline nailed down, you know, and, and don't let him continue. He's not gonna do anything with this property.
I really appreciate your comments, and we will, um, do, I'll try to get ahold of him tomorrow and see where he lies with, uh, if he's gonna make, you know, any kind of decision or has made any decision, and also to, um, get the, uh, parking lot cleaned up there.
Is it possible for new business to, for the, I don't know how you get it on your agenda to talk about it, so we don't have to continue to wait to them, put it on the next two-week agenda and this and so forth? When you find out something, is it something that council can just bring up randomly? Does it have to be on? Uh, maybe we could request to put it on the agenda?
Yeah, the, everything that we do here, we try, like, we just got this one memo this evening from Henry Ford Health Systems in regards to what he can't do. I just got this between, uh, five o'clock, when I left here today, and seven o'clock, when I got here this, this evening. So this was one of the things that, um, did come through, but I'll be glad to, you know, I was trying to inform you, uh, you know, through email and stuff like that, as to when I first, um, started, and, and then there wasn't anything that was really going on, so, um, but I will be glad to, I've got your email, too, so that you can, you, spread the word with your neighbors. Um, we can give reports almost every meeting when it comes to, you know, being on TV, so the residents can see, so it's not, um, you know, necessary for them to come down. I know that it's getting to be a very long process with this, so, um, I would, you know, like to, uh, you know, I'm giving you my word, I'm trying to do everything in my power to get rid of this, you know, you know, problem, so...
Okay. And Halloween is coming up, we might need some beefed up, um, support for that. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Councilman Tyfer?
I just wanna make sure we clarify one thing. The city council has no power on this. We have none. Only administration, city engineer can condemn that property. They can cite them. We could talk, and, you know what, Wendy, you've watched us talk. We talk and talk. We're as frustrated as you are, not as, personally, we don't have to face it, but the truth is, the city council as a group has no power to start condemnation on that property. I would venture to say, if we had that power, that thing would be gone right now.
Madam Mayor, I just want to inform, uh, the people out there that last week, uh, Mr. Long and Mr. Hogan and I had a discussion relative to Riverside Hospital, and I instructed Mr. Long to, uh, to find an environmental attorney, uh, relative to the issue, and I also instructed Mr. Hogan to find a firm outside of the city of Trenton to assess the Riverside Hospital as for its ability to stand on its own, if this deal were to fail. So we should have something coming in the, in the near future from Mr. Long and Mr. Hogan on that regard.
Thank you. Councilman MacLeod?
What does that mean? What does that, you wanna hire an environmental lawyer to do what?
We were going to ex- discuss with environmental lawyer what obligations previous owners have and what our ability would be to force the current owners to participate in the demolition